Well, I applaud allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien is present. Alderman Timmons is absent. Alderman Moran is absent. Alderman Thibodeau?
Here.
Alderman Gueva?
Here.
Alderman Lopez is absent. Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons, absent. Alderman Senate?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thibodeau.
Thibodeau, excuse me.
Thibodeau's already here.
Alderman Cle, absent. Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Kelly is absent. And Alderman Wilshire?
Here.
Okay, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine present.
Thank you. I am going to turn the public hearing over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Okay, we have a public hearing on several resolutions this evening. When we go through each one of the resolutions, we'll have testimony in favor and testimony in opposition for that particular item only, and then we'll go on to the next resolution. There are several. The first is authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $500,000 for hydroelectric improvements. Is there anyone here from the city that can give us an overview and answer questions?
Hi, good evening, Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager and Hydroelectric Overseer. As you know, the approval for the budget $1,000 came out a month ago. The funding is being used for the design of fish passage, both upstream and downstream. Take a seat.
Yeah, you can actually take a seat where Alderman Clemmons is.
Okay, Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager. So, the funding is being used for an engineering firm to do the design work for the upstream and downstream fish passage at both Jackson Mills Hydro and Mine Falls Hydro. We have some very specific requirements that were provided to us through our relicensing process at Mine Falls Hydro. And with the new equipment that we put in at Jackson Mills Hydro, there were some requirements that went along with that. And so, we've got, actually currently have a hydroengineering company onboard as we speak that's getting the design together currently for the downstream passage at Jackson Mills.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the Aldermen have any clarifying questions on this resolution? Seeing none, thank you. Okay. On Resolution R 25146, I'll now ask for testimony in favor.
I have some general questions on this. I remember that fish ladder being discussed last year. Was this something that was already proposed in the budget to do this design work?
All righty, don't.
Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager. To the best of my knowledge, these funds have already been approved, and what we're doing here tonight, as far as the hearing is concerned, is approving the bonding of the funds. And so, yes, we've been talking about, I think originally we were discussing the potential of bonding $7.5 million for fish passage and had decided that we would start off just doing the design and then have a better understanding of what the requirements would be for the actual construction. So, we thought that maybe just by getting the $500,000 and doing the design work first would then allow us to have a better understanding of what exactly we would need for future funding to implement both.
All right, thank you.
So, was this part of the supplemental, additional spending that was voted in after the June hearing last year to increase, override the spending cap to allow different projects to be done? I'm just, and here's one of my concerns. What's the bond rate? What's the term of the bond for this amount of money?
Twenty years.
It's a twenty-year bond, and what's the interest rate running on these bonds?
It's in the resolution.
Four percent.
Yeah, I know.
Four percent?
Four percent or less.
Okay. Why are we bonding $500,000 when we had a meeting and you, first of all, formed an ad hoc debt committee that was very focused on controlling the amount of debt we would take on annually because, you know, our bond rating had dropped a level and we had to be more cognizant of our spending? Then we overrode that bond amount and did an override on the spending cap for somewhere around $45 million. Then, we had another discussion based on spending that we were not going to bond relatively low-dollar amounts. We had to get away from that. Under $3 million, we were going to try and stick to cash because of interest rates and long-term. And I see everything bonded here, and I'm concerned about that. You know, why bond $500,000?
Are you speaking in favor of this? Because this is in favor. It sounds like you're speaking in opposition.
Well, I wanted answers. First of all, how long was the bond, which is twenty years? Interest rate, four percent. And we had said we weren't going to bond low amounts. So, you know what? I'm not going to support this, so I'll come back up against this. But I needed to get some basic answers to understand. Thank you.
Anyone else testimony in favor? I'll take testimony in opposition.
Given the information I've just heard, I'm not in support of bonding this. Half a million dollars for twenty years, even if it's a design phase, if you have something more substantial to do this work, then I think you go and bond it. But this amount is very low, and I think it should be paid out of cash and not a twenty-year bond. Thank you.
Tim Cummings, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. I was going to just add some clarifying remarks if the body wanted relative to how we got to where we are today. It may be germane to the conversation at hand, but I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, whether you want me to provide some additional details.
Yes.
Okay, so, first, the reason why we're up here this evening is because we are trying to move towards a point in time where we're trying to do all of our bond authorizations in the spring season. So, I'm hoping that this will become more routine with the budget season, that we do our bonding and capital projects. We are doing some of the lower dollar amounts through bonding and debt service because we couldn't accommodate it in the operational budget with all of our current expenditures and commitments and obligations, so we had to balance it. We absolutely could, with this particular resolution, do it at a higher dollar level as it was contemplated through the ad hoc committee. This is more like a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar project. It was thought of to be more prudent to only authorize monies for the design at this time because we're not 100% sure of what the total project cost is going to be. And so, to take a more prudent and conservative approach, we only wanted to get through the design. We know we're going to need to come back for the construction monies. That may be more than seven-and-a-half million, it may be less than seven-and-a-half million dollars. But this would be a good opportunity for us to start working on the project in earnest and be able to have more details when we would be looking for the full expenditure for this project amount. I think it is a wise approach to take in the sense that this is an eligible capital project cost, and it will go to something that will have a depreciable life, and it is a piece of a larger puzzle that we're trying to put together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, this will also be coming up with the budget tonight. It'll also get a very high rating in the Capital Improvements Program. Any other questions? Any, okay, we're back to, anyone else in opposition? Seeing none? You already spoke in opposition. You can't speak twice.
Why not? Why is it up here?
Because I haven't got to the second one yet.
Oh. They jumped over here.
Once again, testimony then and up in support. Seeing none. Now, testimony again in opposition.
So, I can't say that I fully understood what Director Cummings was saying regarding, you know, their goal to do all their bonding in the spring. That's fine. And I'm not certain, I'm a little bit concerned when I hear the seven-and-a-half or $7.1 million project cost that was given. They really, it sounds like there's a good bit of uncertainty in that number, and so, it could be lower, it could be higher. And, of course, we're faced with all this bonding debt and these restrictions on how much we can spend annually supposedly from the ad hoc committee, although we seem to have no problem blowing the ceiling up on that. But if we do have real bonding restrictions, then potentially this project could be stayed off for a long time. What is the, what's the cost of $500,000 bonded out twenty years at four percent? Can somebody tell me what we pay for that?
It's in the legislation, the yearly spend.
It's in, where is it?
It's in the legislation.
So, tell me.
This is legislation.
So, tell me what it is, because I don't have it with me, and that's your job. Don't direct me to something I don't have. I came here to get answers.
They were all published in the agenda. Thank you.
So, we're going to pay $710,000 to borrow $500,000 to do a design. I think, I think that's absurd. Honestly, I don't support that, and I don't need to say anymore to that. Thank you.
PI?
First of all, yes.
Can we just make sure that we're not speaking until we're called on?
Yeah.
That's one of the rules, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
With no more testimony, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution R 25146 at 7:14 PM. I'll open the public hearing on R 25149 at 7:14 PM. R 25149 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $600,000 for roof repair replacement at police department headquarters. Is there someone, I know there's someone here to talk to that this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Moriarty, Captain with the Nashville Police Department. So, the Nashville Police Department is seeking a favorable recommendation on R 25149, a request to bond up to $600,000 for the purposes of replacing the roof at 28 Officer James Roach Drive. In the background on this, our roof was built or construction, constructed in 1979, so over forty-five years old, and we're in dire need of updating our infrastructure at this time. We have multiple leaks in our roof, and we're unable to determine exactly where they're coming from due to the particular type of roof that we have, which is a ballast style. Due to the roof system, we can't pinpoint those leaks, and while having multiple contractors out, they said it would be best to replace at this point in time. We also feel important to note that on May 20th, our police commissioners voted unanimously to approve this project. And in addition to that, R 25149 is sponsored by the mayor and co-sponsors as well, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, and President Wilshire. This project rated in the fiscal year '26, capital improvements, number eighteen out of 125 projects. So, we're hopeful of having this repair completed.
Any of the Aldermen have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open it up on R 25149, testimony in favor. Seeing no one, I'll now open up testimony in opposition.
Just for some general information, was this an item that was budgeted and forecasted as a project that needed to be done?
It was, part of the budget process is the Capital Improvements Program, and it was, as was stated, is a high priority in the Capital Improvements Program. And it was pointed out when we had all our presentations of Capital Improvements that the leaks caused more expensive damage than fixing the roof.
For sure. So, I don't have a problem understanding that. I do have a problem with bonding. I presume this is a twenty-year at four percent, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so a $600,000 amount over twenty years would amount to, if I look at comparatively, I don't have the number here, around $750,000, is that correct? Is that what the legislation gives for that?
I'm sure Alderman Sullivan has that number.
I don't have it. I'm right here.
Alderman Timmons? I think it's Alderman Senate.
$852,000.
Eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. Okay, so, yeah, that makes sense. Eight fifty, I was off by the hundred. Okay, so, again, I don't understand why we're bonding this for twenty years to fix leaks in a roof. That should not be a bonded project. If we're going to stay true to what we're doing here to avoid bonding and avoid, you know, high-interest payments and cut back on all these small amounts, then I think we should live up to that because the public was told quite a bit about, you know, the importance of doing this, not just what the ad hoc committee did, but the need to control the low-dollar amounts that we're bonding, given the fact that interest rates moved up from two percent to essentially double that. And I don't know how good we feel about it holding at four in, you know, by the spring of next year. I'm not even certain where this is going to go. I don't think it's going to go down, though, but I hope it doesn't go up. So, my vote is, I don't mind doing the project for $600,000, but I do mind bonding it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Open it up once again for testimony in favor. Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition. Seeing none. I'll now close the public hearing on Resolution R 25149 at 7:19 PM, and I'll open the hearing on Resolution R 25150 at 7:19 PM. R 25150 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for fire department roof replacement repair at five locations and HVAC improvements. Is there someone here to, oh, chief?
Good evening. For the record, Steve Buxton, Nashville Fire Chief. I'm here tonight to advocate for a favorable passage of R 25150. This money will be used for roof replacement, $1.7 million, at three of our facilities, and roof repair at two of our other facilities. As some of you may know, we recently engaged in a facility assessment study. There's a presentation to the Infrastructure Committee last night, and this is a high priority within that report for us to start working on. This was submitted as part of our Capital Improvements Program, and it is supported by the Board of Fire Commission. Also involved, included in that bond is $300,000 for HVAC work, and that will be accomplished at two of our facilities.
Okay. Any amplifying questions from anyone on the board? Seeing none. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I'll now open testimony in favor of R 25150. Seeing none, I'll now open it up to testimony in opposition of R 25150.
Hi, once again, consistent with the other two resolutions I spoke to, for this dollar amount of $2 million, I don't think we should be bonding based on what we had told taxpayers we were going to do with these lower-value amounts, and $2 million was certainly a number thrown out there. I think that this shouldn't be bonded. Again, if we look at twenty years at four percent, what are we looking at paying on the $2 million bond? Do we know?
Alderman Senate?
$2,840,000.
Yeah, almost $3 million to borrow two. Again, we were going to avoid all this debt on the books and be careful about this, and it just seems like we're just plowing the dead on. Now, I don't know if this changed because we were doing the tax cap initiative. I didn't watch the meeting two nights ago. I don't know if that was taken off the table or not, but are we moving forward with a tax cap instead of a spending cap?
Nothing has changed.
So, it's still a tabled item?
Yes.
Okay. So, I was trying to understand if that was affecting your moving forward on bonding all of these lower-dollar amount projects. But, you know, I was disappointed with the budget increase of almost six percent.
But don't stray from this resolution.
I'm just saying why I don't support this additional bonding. It's not a stray. It's a reason why I don't support this. We have a lot of bonding debt. We have a pretty good increase on our budget at a time when the state had to cut theirs three and four percent, and I think it imposes a lot on the taxpayers, and this continues to mound on and pile on debt. And it doesn't meet the goals, the objectives, and the initiatives that the city has brought forth to the public on avoiding this. And just for that reason, I support the project, but I don't support the bonding. Thank you.
Anyone else testimony in opposition of R 25150? Seeing none. Testimony once again in favor of R 25150. None. And once again, testimony in opposition. Seeing no further. I'll now close the public hearing on Resolution R 25150 at 7:23 PM, and I will open the public hearing on Resolution R 25151 at 7:23 PM. R 25151 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $5,500,000 for the Public Works Division garage design. Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. I also have Director Lisa Foto of Public Works with me this evening. We're up here before you to ask for your favorable recommendation on R 25151. This will allow us to continue moving the project forward. As you may know, we are currently meeting the Joint Committee on Infrastructure and Board of Public Works, are meeting regularly to advance this project. This resolution was favorably recommended by the Board of Public Works. This project has been before the CIC Committee and has been a high priority for the department for many years now, and we are making good and earnest, good and earnest efforts to advance the project. So, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I provided a communication this evening to you all that goes into greater detail, just so you can have some background context about the efficiencies that we're trying to achieve. One of the major goals is trying to bring all of the equipment and vehicles under a roof to extend the life of the various assets that we have. The building, the street department garage is currently at its end of life. We're trying to avoid costly deferred capital maintenance. We are trying to bring the building, we're trying to create a building that will be more energy-efficient and reduce operational costs and provide a better level of efficiency overall for the department. And so, we are looking for this money so we can continue with the design and to keep the project on track. Ultimately, the goal is to try to get under construction for next summer. With that being said, I'll hand it over to Director Foto in case she wants to add additional comments. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
She's all set? Okay, Director Foto. Any amplifying questions, though, from anyone? Alderman Senate?
Thank you. Just curious at what stage of the design process we're currently at.
Director Cummings?
Sure, absolutely. So, we are currently in the midst of schematic design. We're hoping to conclude schematic design in June. We have monies already set aside to continue on through to what is referred to as design development, and then we would need these additional monies to continue on to get into what's called Construction Documentation, CD. And so, we're hopeful to do that within the next year to keep this project on track. Thank you.
Additional question?
So, the $2 million we allocated recently is expended.
Or will be expended, I would suggest, by the end of December. Thank you.
That's it? Any other questions? All right. I'll now open up testimony in favor of R 25151. Seeing none, testimony in opposition?
The $2 million that's already been allocated, was that for design work as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we're adding another $5.5 million for design. Why is this design cost so high for a, you know, essentially a garage? A garage? I mean, we designed the art center for a million dollars, pretty big building. It was a million dollars for architect fees. We're designing a very large garage for heavy equipment, and it's so far going to be $7.5 million. What's the cost per square foot on the design? How many square feet is that garage?
I don't think anyone here has that, but the, this building is more than twice the size with much more complex equipment inside it, and design drawings are very expensive.
Yeah, that's really expensive, and frankly, I don't think we can afford it. Okay? We have a lot of wants and needs, but I see a tax rate that just keeps climbing and a budget that just keeps growing because this, the Alderman will not cut positions and will not cut the budget, and the big driving cost is positions. So, that's going to continue to be a problem when you look at health care and paying into the other expenses associated with retirement funds, retirement people. And, you know, these projects are nice, and I understand the, you know, extending equipment life and all that stuff, but I just don't think we have the money. We don't, has a cost for building the garage been given?
The estimate right at the moment, time is $40 million.
Yeah, $40 million. I mean, and that's going to go up. I really feel that that will be a higher number. As, you know, I don't know when they came forth with the $2 million, whether they said this is going to be just a beginning part, and the $5.5 million is going to be the next chunk for design. Do we anticipate more money needed for design work, or is this going to finish the design work?
As far as the Infrastructure Committee... As far as the Infrastructure Committee and the, do you want to answer that, Director Cummings?
So there's some, again, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, there's some clarifications that I could provide for you. First and foremost, I want to make sure it's clear that the project is not $40 million. It's something in the order of magnitude of $54 million, and that's in your, that's in your packet. Something also, and also discussed at length at the Joint Infrastructure and Board of Public Works where a financing plan was laid out. Additionally, the commentary around this is a lot of money for design. I completely agree with it. However, is it within reason or within the market range of what a design should cost on a project of this order? I would say yes. You should strive to try to keep total design costs in and around 10% of total project cost. And so if we understand that we're looking at a $54-ish million project, it wouldn't be unreasonable to see, you know, $5 to $7 million in design work when you're talking about not just architectural design, you're talking about civil engineering, you're talking about OPM services, you're talking about geotechnical services and borings and other due diligence necessary to be able to bring the project to a place where you can move forward with construction. Thank you.
Are you all set? Ms. Orlando?
I'll wait until the next one.
All right. There's no further opposition. Once again, testimony in favor. Seeing none. Testimony, once again, in opposition.
Yeah, I don't support this. I mean, hearing it's a $54 million project that's going to, you know, be leveled in. I don't know how that's going to get bonded in your, you know, bond debt analysis that you're not going to exceed $30 million in any year. That's a flipping huge project. And I think the public was very generous in building a new facility over there and taking on the debt of that to put up a new building for all of the workers to have, you know, a rodent-free, nice building. And, you know, it just seems to me it never ends where we have to foot the bill for these projects that are very expensive with budgets that never go down because, God forbid, we can't cut a person. We cannot do that. We're not going to do that in this city. You know, the fact that the state's got to cut their budget and, you know, get people, you know, have layoffs and reduce the size of departments is happening at the state, but not here in Nashua. We'll just keep raising that tax rate and keep having citizens fund it through their property. I think it's wrong. I think there's a limit. And I don't think the budget this year was responsible. I didn't come out and participate because, you know, I'm not a welcome participant. I got the message. I'm okay with that. But I'm here tonight to say I don't support this spending. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution R.25151 at
7:32.
7:32. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution R.25153 at 7:32. R.25
153.
R.25153 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,550,000 for fire and street department capital equipment reserve SURF purchases. Ms. Enright?
Thank you. Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. I'm here to speak in favor of R.25153 for a favorable passage for the bonding of five items. Fire apparatus, breathing apparatus, I'm sorry, for $2,125. Street department is looking for a front-end loader for $549,000 and two six-wheel dumps for $438,000 each. These items are on the FY '26 SURF schedule, and in order to meet the budget requirements, the larger items that are listed here are looking for bonding of these items. I have Director Photo here with me to speak further on what these actual pieces of equipment are utilized for a whole time.
Director Photo?
Good evening. For the record, Lisa Photo, Director of Public Works. I am speaking in favor of R.25153, which is before you this evening. We're seeking bond approval and early procurement for two Freightliner six-wheel trucks and a wheeled loader. The two six-wheel trucks are replacing two 2016 six-wheelers that have corrosion in the undercarriages and electrical systems. We're requesting early approval of these to avoid a price increase of about 8% in August. The trucks are used for plowing snow and hauling materials. It will take around 18 months to get these two vehicles from the date we issue a purchase order. This is a long lead time. The wheeled loader is replacing a 2008 wheeled loader that has corrosion and a worn-out transmission. We're requesting an early approval of this loader due to an expected increase of about 6% in August. It is used for plowing and loading materials. And this has about a six-to-eight-month lead time from the time we issue a purchase order. So in summary, the R.25153 will allow the sale of bonds for Public Works to procure three fiscal-year '26 plan SURF purchases in advance to avoid price increases expected in August. The Board of Public Works has issued a favorable recommendation, and it should also be noted that prior to purchasing this equipment, it would have to go before the Board of Public Works and the Finance Committee.
Chief Buxton, do you want to address your acquisitions?
Thank you. Steve Buxton, National Fire Chief. Speaking in favor of R.25153, this is for our self-contained breathing apparatus replacement. As you heard, it is in the SURF schedule. The units that we are currently utilizing were purchased in 2000. They were refurbished under a grant program in 2015 to extend their life and also place them back under warranty. They are currently coming out of warranty and starting to cost a significant amount of money to maintain. And as I said earlier, it was placed in the SURF schedule and is due in FY '26 for replacement. This does have a favorable recommendation by the Board of Fire Commission as well.
Any amplifying questions from any of the aldermen? Alderman O'Brien?
Chief, can you remind me, does the NFPA have a recommendation on the life expectancy of SCBA's?
I don't know if they have a life expectancy, but I could certainly look to see and get you that information.
Okay. But this would follow up, if I may?
Follow up, go ahead.
Yeah. To me, this seems pretty important. If we're going to tell firemen to go deep into a structure with shoddy equipment, you can't rip off the mask and breathe. So this could affect someone's life.
Correct. This is a piece of our life safety equipment.
Any other questions? Alderman Vea?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Director Cummings. Was these the vehicles for DPW that we went over at the Finance Committee meeting the other night? Are these different ones? Okay.
Okay. No other questions. I'll now open up testimony in favor of R.25153. Seeing none. Testimony in opposition?
I don't mind replacing CERT equipment for fire and DPW. That's worn, old, and has a long lead time. But we are bundling five different pieces of equipment that total much less than the $3.5 million to do the bond. And I don't know if that's how we typically do our SURF funding. But if we looked at each one individually, it would not meet that bond threshold to, the dollar amount to meet a bond threshold. So I question that, but I definitely support the replacement of the equipment. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none. I'll open it up once again for testimony in favor. Seeing no additional. Testimony in opposition again? Seeing no, none. I'll now close the public hearing on Resolution R.25153 at 7:40 PM. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I, my motion would be that the May 29, 2025 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:40 PM. We'll give a couple minutes, and then we'll go right into budget. And it's been noticed in two places, including the city's website and according to the requirements of RSA 91-A:22. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Tim Senate?
Here.
I didn't hear. You said here. Thank you. Alderman Derek Tevo?
Here.
Alderman John Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman-at-large, Rashana Kelly is absent. Alderman-at-large, Laurie Woshire?
Here.
Alderman-at-large, Michael B. O'Brien, Sr., is present. And our chairman, Alderman Richard A. Dowd?
Present.
You have one, two, three, four, five, six members present.
And we have several division directors and members of city government with us this evening. First item on the agenda is public comment. You have three minutes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Communications?
We have one communication from Kevin Burgess, Board of Fire Commissioner's chairman. And the reason is referral to the Board of Aldermen of Resolutions R-25150 and R-25153. We also have communications from Chief Kevin Rock of the Nashville Police Department regarding Resolution R-25-149, Nashville Police Department Roof Repair and Replacement.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place them on file. Without objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for communication that was received after the agenda was prepared. We have two. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, we have communication from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works. Referrals from the Board of Aldermen to Resolution.
Okay, and the other one? This one?
Okay. Let me see. Can I see yours?
Yeah.
I've got a ton of them here. Thank you. We also have a communication from Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, and Lisa Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding the communications providing additional context of R-25151.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Unfinished business?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
We have before us this evening is R-25146, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $500,000 for hydroelectric improvement. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
The motion on the floor is to recommend final passage to the full Board of Aldermen from the Budget Committee of R.25146. Open it up for discussion. Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I just had some general questions about the bonding resolutions in general because we're kind of in that weird funky period between fiscal years while we've, we haven't approved budget, but we haven't started our fiscal year yet. So I just want to clarify. The bonding resolutions that we have before us tonight total $12.1 million. And it's my assumption, and I did see Treasurer Enright in the audience, and I'm hoping that maybe she can just clarify this, that that $12.1 million goes against the current fiscal year '25 spending cap. And I'd like to know if it doesn't.
No.
Okay, this is why I'm asking this question, because...
In the resolutions, they all talk about being bonded FY '20, '26.
Okay, but because we're appropriating the money in fiscal year 2025, does it go against the '25 or the '26 budget?
No, because all these bonds say that they won't be... Let me have Treasurer Enright come up and explain it rather than me saying anything.
Thank you.
I think that mic is dead. You might want to...
It's dead?
Or it was.
He put batteries in.
Oh, he put batteries in. Okay, I missed that. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now with it? Okay. Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. All of the bonds resolutions being presented this evening state in it that it is going against the '26 budget. So they are not against the '25 budget at all.
Okay. Can I have a follow-up?
Follow-up question, Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. So our, we're 12, sorry, we're $33 million under the cap. We're going to take this away, so whatever that math is. Then we're going to be, then we have some more on deck for next week. So we're kind of chewing into that cap already.
Yes, because the plan is to do all of the authorizations now at the same time as budget so that we can solidify everything that needs to be done for that budget year, at the beginning of the budget year.
I see. One...
Follow-up question. Go ahead.
Do you have at your fingertips how much we bonded total in fiscal year '25?
Fiscal year '25, our bonding, I am going off of memory, $54 million?
$54 million.
I believe.
Okay.
Dawn, I won't. Alderman Dowd, you...
No, I don't have that on my fingertips either. I don't have my book with me either.
I'd be happy to confirm that amount for you.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Well said. Any other, Alderman Senate?
Thank you. I didn't have all my ducks in a row for this particular resolution during the public hearing, but it was brought up during the public hearing, and I was able to confirm. Last year, as part of R.24115, where we appropriated largely cash projects, we appropriated $500,000 for the design of a fish ladder. And unless I'm hearing incorrectly, now we are bonding $500,000 for the design of a fish ladder. And so I was just hoping to get some clarification on that.
Would someone like to come up and answer his question? Director Cummings or Deb Chisholm, either one? Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. As I understand, you are correct, Alderman Senate. First and foremost, we, in last fall, did a supplemental appropriation of $500,000 to start the hydro improvements, which contemplated as an example the fish ladder project. I'm not exactly sure how much that specific project is going to cost, that element of the project, I should say. I think the $7.5 million that is, you know, conceived is to do multiple improvements that are actually put upon us from a regulatory obligation standpoint because we're going through a re-permitting process. And the fish ladder is kind of the one that I think people think about and talk about most often. And I defer to Director Sullivan and Deb Chisholm, who could probably speak in a little bit more technical detail. So this is contributing and is on top of that $500,000. So if you will, it'd be an additional $1 million against that $7.5 million, if you wanted to look at it that way. And then I believe it's Director Sullivan's intention is to, once that, you know, project is better scoped out, designed, and they can get a better cost estimate to it, it would be coming forward for an additional $5-ish million or whatever it may be to actually construct and implement the project. I hope I have that summarized correctly, but that's my understanding of it.
Director Cummings, just for the public's knowledge, we're under a requirement to do this fish ladder to keep our license with the federal government, to have that dam, which gives us revenue. So if we don't do this project... So if we don't do this project, they're not going to allow us to use the dam anymore. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, and I think this is a good example of how some people may sometimes get lost in the nuance because there's also additional requirements and additional improvements necessary, but we often just think about the fish ladder. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman, Senate?
I understand the regulatory requirements, but thus far, we haven't heard much other than that this is largely for the design of the fish ladder, which at the time that we approved 115, it was described to us that we were requesting $500,000 now so that we can get the project to a point of 100% design before coming forward with the bond request. So while I understand that we're required by regulation to have this in place in order to use the dam, I'm struggling to vote yes on this without more clarity.
I think this additional money goes towards the total cost of the ladder in general. It's probably in a position where you're also looking at finalized drawings so you can actually have a better estimate of the actual cost. If you don't do the design, you won't have the exact cost. That's what we've been trying to do on most of our bonding projects lately is get the design down so that we know exactly how much we need to bond to get the project completed.
Sure, we definitely have to design it, but we authorized $500,000 to design it already, and I would feel more comfortable voting on this if we could have maybe Director Sullivan come in because at the time that we authorized this, he gave us a real in-depth look and outline of the fish ladder project with hydro dam improvements, and looking at these equivalent amounts, I'd be more comfortable knowing where they are.
Ms. Chisholm, you want to add something?
Hi, good evening, Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager. To your point and to Director Cummings' point as well, we do commonly lump everything together and call it fish passage, but the funding that we're looking for covers fish passage in a general sense, specifically designing upstream and downstream fish passage. But the other requirements that go along with the relicensing of the Mine Falls facility, the majority of that is fish passage, but what you also end up with is the requirements for several types of plans, survivability plans that go along with fish passage, the water quality studies that have to be done as part of the relicensing and as part of the license exemption requirements that we have at Jackson are also in there. So there are other studies that have to be subcontracted out primarily to the hydroengineering company that will help us get to that point. So while it's not the same as just a design, we're also to a point where the additional requirements sort of get lost in the sauce. So there are additional requirements other than what we're talking about as fish passage, and specifically for this, for the design of the fish passage.
Do you know, is the design completed?
The design is barely started.
Okay, thank you.
We are working essentially with the fish agencies. They require conceptual design, 30% design, 60%, 90% design, and we've got a back and forth that goes with them for comments that they have, requirements that they have that we may or may not have put into our design. So it's very extensive, it'll probably take us a year.
Thank you.
All said, Alderman, Senate?
Yep.
Alderman, Tebow, Tebow?
Thank you, it's Tebow. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question that could go to Ms. Enright or Director Cummings. How much are we, what is, what is the guideline we're looking to bond each year? Like what is the, what are we trying to hit or, and are we trying to hit a number?
If I may, Mr. Chairman...
Director Cummings?
Yes, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. I appreciate the question because I wanted to come up here and kind of clarify this. So when we did the ad hoc committee process, we talked about the idea of, you know, trying to strive towards an over a five-year period not authorizing new debt in excess of about $125 million or thereabouts. So year over year, somewhere between 20 and 25 million in new capital expenditures is, and then ultimately what we're really trying to do is make sure that we're selling debt, and that's a really critical distinction that we need to make, that we're trying to sell debt in a way that allows us to keep an even debt service budget from an operational standpoint. We carry, I'm going to say off the top of my head, $15-ish million in debt service, thereabouts, and some of it falls off every year, and then we have to replace that, and you know, we're adding new debt of around $500-ish thousand year over year, and that's what we're striving to keep stable. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Follow-up?
Follow-up for you, Director Cummings. You might want to come back, please. So tell me why it's, so you run a company and you have a lot of debt service and you have a lot of outstanding debt, that's probably a bad thing, right? So can you tell me why, and tell everybody why, in a city or a town, why having, carrying debt service and why bonding can be a good thing for a city or a town?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, if I can.
Director Cummings?
Great question. One of the biggest reasons is because we want to show to our outside entities, particularly bonding and rating agencies, that we're reinvesting in ourselves, whether you're private enterprise or a public enterprise. We, you know, need to ensure that we're able to provide our services and can operate, and for the outside rating agencies in particular, they want to see us spending a debt service of somewhere-ish around 10% of total operation costs, and that is their mark as to, you know, making sure that we're reinvesting in our, in our capital assets in ourselves so that we can provide the good services and they have, and people have confidence in what we do.
Follow-up?
And how are we doing with that?
Ms. Chairman, if I may, thank you, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. Good, I think we are on track. I think in, we're a little low, in all honesty, with that metric. I would like to see that up a little bit higher. However, you have to balance that. You have to balance that against all the other competing expenses that we have. And so, understanding that, you know, I think it's going to be something that we're going to have to do over time and grow gradually. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just kind of take that opportunity to segue into actually another comment or point that I wanted to make, which was, I hear the comments about us trying to spend cash first as opposed to borrowing money, and I agree with that, I applaud that when appropriate, that does make sense. And what we're doing though as a strategy totally works and is appropriate because how we're spending our money is a way in which we will get use out of it and accommodate our other expenses. The last I checked, we're not looking to move the police headquarters in the next 20 years. We will get our full life out of that roof replacement. So borrowing it makes sense as a strategy because we are constrained on how much cash we actually have available for capital improvement projects. Approximately $1.4 million is what we're spending in cash on capital improvement projects. We increased that from last year, and I argue we should increase that more over the next couple of years, but you're going to, again, have to grow into it. You know, we talked about a tax rate of about a 6% increase year over year. If we were to do some of the things suggested tonight and do all the other expenses that we have to do because we're obligated to do them, you'd be looking at an eight, nine, 10% tax increase year over year. So we're trying to be fiscally responsible, we're trying to balance all the needs and work slowly towards what's being talked about. I think over the next couple of years, if that is the policy decision of this body where we're saying we want to maybe spend two, two and a half million in capital improvements cash, we will, we will build and work towards that. We'll start seeing some of these smaller projects be paid for in cash, but we can't just do that overnight. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. All said. I'd also like to point out that City of Nashville has the highest bond ratings with all three people that sell us bonds, and we have as high or higher rating than the United States government right now. And you can't say that for the vast majority of cities and towns in the state of New Hampshire. And in many instances, we have people that actually pay us a premium to buy our bonds, which reduces the cost of the bond. And I won't get into detail on that, I'll let the treasurer do that if you want the question followed up. But Alderman Sullivan?
I was going to ask for this resolution and the following resolution if there was any other way that we could pay for it in cash out of the assigned fund balance or the unassigned fund balance.
Who wants to address that?
Director Cummings.
Director Cummings. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Great question, and I think that is one that we should entertain in the sense that we're just trying to follow the policy directive that was previously given in the fact that it was suggested that maybe we don't supplementally appropriate in the fall with surplus. And so we're trying to be cognizant of that, and so we're not using surplus that we typically do in the fall for capital projects because we're not, we're not wanting to supplementally appropriate. And so we're pivoting towards this type of strategy, and that's fine, that's okay. We can, we can absolutely do that. But to the question at hand, I couldn't tell you today how much cash we have because that's more of a fall conversation, but that is a way that you could do it, but the trade-off will be this body would have to be comfortable supplementally appropriating the monies and, and understanding that that would then be a spending cap conversation. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All said.
Yeah, so if I could just summarize, maybe, but just not tonight. Is that fair? Is that a fair characterization?
Let me give you a lapel mic.
Yep, I think that is a fair characterization if you're also willing to supplementally appropriate and increase the spending cap. Because you're going to need to be able to do that in order to use the cash that, that you might be thinking about during the surplus season.
Okay, all right. Any other, yes, Alderman, Jettie?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, if I could. So from, if, if Ms. Chisholm could come up, so the question of the, of the Mine Falls Dam, I was over there in the, you know, the last couple of weeks, and the water's really rushing over that dam and through this loose way and everything. Is that functional right now? Are we harvesting energy from that, from all that water that's going through there?
Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager. Probably. There is a window of water flow where the turbines will run best. If it's too low, we shut them down. If it's too high, we also shut them down. We did recently, and maybe, maybe, sorry, we did lower the water level of the impoundment behind the dam to replace all of the flashboards at the top of the dam. And so now that we've replaced those, the water flows have been a little bit better, not because of the new flashboards, mind you, but because of the, I don't want to say it out loud, but the lack of rain that we've had over the last couple of days. So when we get flows that are about like this, Mine Falls is, is running very well. But when the water does get too high and it's just gushing everywhere, then no. But in order to lower the impoundment, we turn off the turbines and we let the water just run right through the system so that it's, gives us some space to work to replace those flashboards.
Okay, so that's disappointing. I was watching all that water and I was thinking, oh, this is great, you know, it's, we're making a lot of money, but maybe not. But generally speaking, is, is the dam, it's a positive thing for the city, right? We are making money from that.
Correct, and I am one of the people that's actually happy when it's raining out because that is providing us more, more revenue.
Okay, so thank you, and I...
Follow-up?
Yeah, not thank you for that, but I have a follow-up. The general discussion that Alderman Sullivan, you know, started and Director Cummings, you know, kind of responded, I mean, I understand, I think I understand, you know, that it's, you know, we have a good relationship with our bonding companies, we have a high rating, and we ought to be proud of that. But, you know, I also understand some basic, you know, finances, and, you know, if you can, you know, if you can, if you can buy something for $500,000 without having to borrow the money and end up paying $710,000 for it, it just makes common sense that you would take your cash and buy what you can buy without having to borrow. I mean, most of us don't borrow, you know, we don't take a mortgage on our house to replace a roof if we have the money to pay for the roof. So I'm wondering, you know, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but, you know, isn't there a, you know, when we, I thought we had a discussion before that we were going to, you know, try to save money by, you know, bonding less and paying for cash when possible, and, you know, is there a number that we, you know, that we use and, you know, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, it's hard for me to explain to my voters that it makes sense for us to pay, you know, you know, half, half again what something costs because, you know, we, we can improve our, our bond rating or maintain our reputation with the bonding companies and that, you know, we don't want to, you know, we, you know, we've got this surplus, but we don't want to use it because, because it's a supplemental appropriation and somehow people have criticized us for that. I mean, if it's, if it's the right thing to do, if we've got the cash and surplus and we can buy something, you know, like we're doing, we're buying equipment vehicles early to, to avoid, you know, price increases. So, you know, that makes sense, you know, we're, you know, we're spending the money now in order to save money. Doesn't it also make sense that if we do have the surplus sitting there in our bank account, and as I understand it, we have more than what is recommended or required, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I'm sure I'll be told if I am, but doesn't it make sense to use that surplus money to, to buy things more cheaply than, than, you know, buying it, you know, and borrowing the money to buy it? Could, could, we asked Director Cummings to come and kind of explain that to me because I'm, I'm a little, I'm having questions about this policy that we're, you know, that we're abiding by here.
Director Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. The, the point is well taken, and I, I, I hear you, and I, I agree in a lot, in a lot of ways that financially, strategically, it may behoove us to use cash instead of borrowing the money and paying interest. And I, I think that that is something that we should consider and do. In a previous conversation, it was clear that that seemed to chafe against the desires of this body, and we heard that loud and clear too. And so, understanding that and being willing to, to, to accept that, there are some strategic expenditures that would qualify as capital expenses that it is entirely appropriate to bond. If you want to make a strategic decision not to use your cash, and, and you, and you see people deploy that strategy a lot, they would rather preserve their cash and borrow the money because strategically, if it's a qualifying expense, they know it would be better to use someone else's money than to use theirs, and then you can avoid risk and then also push the expense to, to... And then, you can avoid risk and then also push the expense to, the people who actually will benefit from it, not the current taxpayer, but the future taxpayer as well as the current taxpayer. Totally acceptable strategy. You could certainly do that. It was, it was, and so, with that being said, that's the strategy that we're deploying tonight and suggesting to you because we're trying to adhere and conform to previous guidance that was given. And so, we can, we can do it either way. It just needs to be understood that if you would prefer to use cash and supplementally appropriate, it will then trigger a spending cap-type conversation. And there seemed to be a resistance to doing that in the past, and so, I recognize that. And so, we, as an administration, strategically selected qualifying projects that could work for us. I think the roofs is a great example, whether it's the fire or the police roofs, those are expenditures that are capital expenditures that you could absolutely outlay a 20-year payment, and it would be completely acceptable. And yes, the trade-off to that is it's more, in the police instance, a $700,000 cost versus a $500,000 cost. But what you did was is you shifted the risk out, and we know that we can pay for it and accommodate it, and we've preserved $500,000. We've also worked within the other constraints that we have that is truly critical to talk about. We have an operating budget where we have 75% to 80% of it already obligated, and we have to recognize that and balance that. Then, we have other costs, other fixed asset, other fixed costs such as utilities that we have to accommodate for, and we have to balance this. And we recognize that, and so, that's why that capital improvements budget did not go up $3, $4, $5 million. It only went up to $1.4 million year over year to try to balance and recognize and realize everything that we're talking about is gonna take time. And we will strategically work in a direction that I think you'll be comfortable with, but it's not gonna be overnight. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Any other, yes, Alderman Jettie?
So, if I could just follow up. So, you know, I followed what you said, but, you know, the part that puzzles me is when you talk about avoiding risk. I mean, you know, there's no way that the city of Nashua is not going to have to pay that money back, you know? It's not, it's not like we're going, you know, like we're a corporation and the stockholders, instead of raising the money from the stockholders to buy, to build a building or to build a roof, you borrow the money, and if something goes wrong, the corporation goes out of business, the stockholders walk away with no liability. But the city isn't gonna walk away from anything. I mean, what risk are you talking about? Can you explain that?
Sure, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Director Cummings?
Point well taken, but, but, and I think the point you're making is a valid point. However, there are other risks where you're just trying to preserve cash. If we have something catastrophic happen and we needed to do something imminently where we needed the cash, we would have that available to us. I don't know, maybe the federal government decides to stop Title I funding. That's gonna be a $5 million cost to the city. We would have the cash reserves to actually do it as opposed to maybe trying to find it. I'm just trying to use an example of how we are trying to be very strategic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of quick things that I learned over the years in bonding, you know? When Treasurer for Debt was in place and interest rates went way down, he refinanced a lot of our bonds to down to 2% and 3% interest rate. We can do that. And I believe, I could be wrong, but if we have the money and we want to pay off the bond entirely, we can do that at any time. So, and I also think that if we pass this and it's bonded, a decision can be made later to do it with cash. Yes, Alderman T. Boom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, if a citizen buys a car or buys a house, most of the time, I'm assuming we're paying more than the value of that because we borrow it. I mean, it's the same concept, right? So, you know, a good bond rating is not just to bond to get a good bond rating, it's so that someday we can bond for the bigger items where we don't get denied the bond, right? So, if we have to spend, you know, money to build a school or whatever, whatever it is that costs a lot of money, we want to have a good bond rating so we can bond for that money. Otherwise, we will never have that money. Director Cummings is right. So, when those appropriations, supplemental appropriations came in last year, there was a lot of angst from this board that, what are we doing with this stuff? And we were pretty adamant that we didn't want to see these things because we broke the T-Boom spending cap, right? We went over it, and there was a lot of debate about that, and we don't want to go over the spending cap to the point where we started to say, well, maybe we should have a tax cap instead. And so, we can't keep flipping it back and forth. Now, we want supplemental appropriations, oh, no, now we want it in front, now we, like, we gotta have a strategy to go year to year. We can't just keep flipping what our strategy is gonna be. You know, the surplus, it's never guaranteed, and we already have taken $6 million of that, and it's gonna go towards the tax rate. So, you know, we want to make sure we always have enough for the risk of something happening where we need the cash on hand. So, I mean, I'm gonna at least support this one to start with, but that's kind of how I see what Director Cummings has been saying.
Alderman Sullivan?
Uh, yeah. I, I'm going back and forth. I'm really wrestling with it. I think I'm gonna support it tonight at committee and for the reasons that, you know, I've heard that budgeting at the city level is a lot like budgeting for your, for your home situation as opposed to the federal government because they can just print money and we can't. So, I, I'm leaning towards it because of the fact that by investing this into the hydro plant, it, it ends up, you know, that's, that's a division of the city that actually generates income. So, it technically appreciates in value if we spend the money, number one. Number two, it's a federal mandate in order to keep it open. I, my only question on the back and forth with Director Cummings is that regardless of whether or not we appropriate it now or appropriated in the fall, it's still a $500,000 hit to the spending cap. It doesn't matter. So, I just, I mean, if that's in your decision tree and whether or not it's, I mean, it's gonna count towards the cap. I mean, we're, we're taking $12 million away from the cap already, and we're not even in the new fiscal year yet. And then, I added all these up, and this adds, this adds over a million dollars to our general operating fund for next year. So, we're already a million dollars more into the general fund that we have to, for this, just this debt service. That said, I mean, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this one and, and I think the next one as well in committee anyway, and I gotta let it roll around in my head, but that's kind of what my thinking is right now.
Any other questions? Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, so, you know, is that true that if we appropriate a bond for $500,000, does the $500,000 go on the tax cap or is it just the money that we spend during this fiscal year for interest and principal on that bond that goes against the tax cap? Could maybe-
Is that right? I believe you're correct, but I'll defer to the treasurer. There's a question on what, what goes towards the tax cap. You want to repeat the question, Alderman Jettie?
So, if we, if we appropriate, authorize a bond for $500,000, does the $500,000 go against the tax cap or is it just the principal and interest that we pay during that fiscal year that goes against the tax cap?
Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. My understanding is that the $5 million goes against it, but I do want to get clarification from legal before we affirmatively say that because I was just having a conversation with Director Cummings of this exact subject. That was my understanding, but I need to get clarification.
Okay, thank you.
One thing for sure-
There's the current, the existing tax cap, and then there's the proposed-
Spending-
Spending cap, or the existing spending cap and the proposed tax cap, and then-
But that wouldn't take effect till '27.
Right, if at all, but-
So, I mean, we're taking the obligation, in this case, of the $500,000. But as far as money's going out of the city, it's only the principal and interest for that year. And it's only that principal and interest for every year going over the 20 years. And as we go over the 20 years, the, that number goes down. It's always highest in the first year and gets less and less because you're, just like your own mortgages, you're paying more in principal and less in interest, so. Alderman Sullivan?
I was just gonna say that, and don't take my word for it, we'll wait till the, till it comes in, but I had a friendly discussion with former Alderman T. Boom about the spending cap, and it was my recollection from the conversation that the $500,000 would count, the whole nut would count towards the spending cap, not the 30, whatever the, I can't read it, 30, 35,000 that we would spend. Because my argument was it should just be what we spend, not what we appropriate. But again, don't take my word for it. We'll wait to get that answer.
I won't.
All right. Any more questions?
Well, if I may.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, just basically, as an observational comment, I was a representative in the Hampshire House when former Alderman T. Boom brought up the spending cap, and all 28 Nashua representatives voted against it. Who voted for it? It went down partisan lines. In other words, Alderman T. Boom gave up the sovereign rights of the citizens of Nashua to people that live in Bartlett, Lancaster, Concord, anywhere else. No representation from the city of Nashua. If he wanted to do it, he should have done what he did before, went out and got a petition for it. I don't know what the general public supports it or not. I have myself personally heard no complaints about, you know, people approaching me, get a spending, spending cap back. They haven't. Maybe it'll contact me now, but, you know, I haven't heard anything like that. But I thought that was extremely dirty pool, that you superseded the city authority and then made it into a state law for people who have no association to, to the city of Nashua. And Nashua is a donor town. We support the people in Lancaster and Bartlett that can't afford some of these things. Some of these towns don't even have a police force that rely on the taxpayers' money that Nashua is kicking in for the state police to respond to a call in their neighborhood. It's not a really fair system, and that's just my observational comment. Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, the motion before us is to recommend the full board final passage of R. 25146. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, but also before us this evening is R. 25-149, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $600,000 for roof repair replacement at the police department headquarters. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
The motion on the floor is to recommend, recommendation of the full board of Alderman, the final passage of R. 25149. And I think we had heard previously all of the justification from the captain on the roof unless anybody else has any additional questions? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Again, also before us is R. 25-150, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for fire department roof repairs, replacement at five locations, and HVAC improvement. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
The motion is to recommend final passage of R. 25150. Discussion? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Last night in the Infrastructure Committee, we went through a facility study for Nashua Fire and Rescue. It was very comprehensive. It's very expensive to get it where we need to get it. I'm gonna support this one. My question, last night when the consultants were here, I asked them to give the department a letter grade for the stations, and they gave us a grade of C, which is average, which is about where we are with their experience with the rest of the country. So, nothing, no, nothing crazy there. However, I was curious to know, in the priority of everything that needs to be done at Nashua Fire and Rescue, where this project ranks, number one? And number two, by doing this, how does it improve our grade average for Nashua Fire and Rescue facilities?
Chief?
For the record, Steve Buxton, Nashua Fire Chief. Great question. So, the way they explained it to us when we were sitting down having a conversation, you take care of the envelope of the building first. Water leaks create structural damage, interior damage that can cause things to fall down, is the words they use. So, this is our starting point on our journey down that very expensive path that you talked about, as well as there's some money for HVAC in there to start going after some of the air quality issues we have. To sit here and tell you, like, this work is gonna put us from a C to a B, I don't know what that scale looks like yet, so I can't really comment to that.
All set? Or follow-up?
Yes, please. But it moves us forward. I mean, it gets us going in the right direction, and it improves air quality, et cetera, et cetera, for people that, I was reminded last night, live in these buildings.
That is correct. The life of a firefighter is unique, and better than 25% of their life is actually spent living in these quarters. So, yes.
Okay. Thanks. All set?
Yep.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, another one of my observational comments, passports. These roofs aren't, just didn't fail overnight. We all own a house. When we have the roof done, the contractor usually tells us, your roof is good for 20, 25, 30 years. Some of these are well past their things. As the chairman of infrastructure, as I said last night, very disappointed with passports, dead ignored. Things like the spending cap may have throttled it more because if we don't approve these bonds, then it might become a spending cap item, and then it won't get done. But that doesn't, unless somebody's gonna go up on the roof with a cork to put it in the holes, I don't see it really working. I mean, I compliment the mayor and I compliment this board to realize that our taxpayers paid for these fire stations, paid for the Hunt Building, paid for the schools, and it's a shame that passports are the past, kind of ignored the repairs that were needed to keep these structures, you know, up to par. And unfortunately, the needs, whereas with the school buildings, Alderman Dowd knows that they put security festivals, festivals into the schools. Sad that we need them, but in today's climate, yes, we do to ensure the safety of the students. So, it's these things that we have to deal with, and I totally support this because the roof leaks too much above the police station and everything. I remember the police department coming up and telling us there was snow coming in the windows. So, you know, we can't live like this. These are our structures. Even if you owned your house, you have to paint it to keep the clapboards on it, so this is important.
Yeah. And I can tell you personally, I went around to every station with Chief Buxton, and the con it is really bad. In fact, the guys that work there- In fact, the guys that worked there were caught kidding about when they leave at night, they put buckets out to catch the rain, or they could take a shower if they had a bar of soap. It's not like that bad, but it's leaking pretty bad. And I can tell you from, we just started the New Searls Elementary School vestibule project, we found a leak that came in and was, got into the roofing, I mean, the flooring between the two floors. And it wasn't catastrophic or dangerous at that point, but it was starting to rust. If we hadn't caught it, it could have become very bad. So, leaks are not just water coming through and making things wet inside. If they get in walls, they can cause mold. If, if they, if they start getting underneath the roof, they can affect the plywood that's holding the roof in place, or the insulation below that. So, leaking roofs are nothing to sneeze at. They're very important to repair, and especially con it. So, and Hy-Vac systems, if you have a Hy-Vac system fail on a fire station, guess what? You close the station in the winter. We don't wanna do that either. All right, any other comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Also, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also before us this evening is R. 25-151, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $5,500,000 for the Public Works Division garage design. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Motion on the floor is to recommend final passage of R. 25-151. Is someone here to, you want, provide anything additional, or just go with what was at the public hearing? If none, are there any questions? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. This is the one, this is, this is a resolution I'm struggling with. And I alluded to it in my previous comments because of, I, I think that if I, if, if, if I didn't go to that infrastructure meeting last night and, and saw what needed to be done to our fire facilities, I, I probably would have been in favor of it. But I think for me, it just comes down to prioritization. And I saw pictures of that Pine Hill Fire Station and what was going on in there, and they had estimated that a new fire station was gonna cost 29 million, which we kinda chuckled and said, "Nothing in this city costs 29 million dollars to build." You know, sitting on the middle school committee as I am, and, and seeing how much we spent there, I'm just, I, I can't support this one tonight until, unless and until I can see a, a plan and how it all fits together. Knowing what I now know, that all of these facilities, now, the number that they put out last night was, that I saw, was 100 million dollars. Now, obviously, we just allocated 2 million towards that number. And yes, it's a longer-term plan, but that goes into my comments of a longer-term plan. And this just comes down to prioritization. The other question I had is, or comment, is I looked at the ad hoc committee plan, and there wasn't anything in fiscal year '26 to be spent on the DPW garage. It was gonna be, it was gonna be, starting in fiscal year '27, I think, with a, with a bonding resolution of 10 million dollars. So, I was surprised that this was brought forward a full fiscal year, but it's just my comments around it, my concerns.
Director Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, all great points. And so, I'm just gonna, just kinda make a couple. One, the, the ad hoc work, which this project fits within, and we will continue to massage and manage and balance the competing needs to try to stay within that 20, 25 million dollars. And it was scheduled in FY '27, until we had some capacity, you know, created, the 3.5 million was actually gonna be ahead of it. But we were able to slot that out and pay for it a different way. So, we're able to push things forward. And we're gonna do that. That is gonna, that's gonna happen. You need to look at some of the work that we're doing, some of the strategic documents as, as living documents that are gonna be malleable, but hopefully, they're getting us towards the direction we wanna, we wanna go. And so, I think that's a great point. I think the additional monies that's gonna be needed for the fire assets, no question, we're gonna need to develop a plan, and we're gonna need to accommodate that. And, and I'm trying to, to work with that, understanding the policy directive between 20 and 25 million, how we're gonna do that. And I think through conversations with the, you know, city administration and, and the fire department, we will develop a schedule that I, I believe will work and, and be able to accommodate the needs of the fire department, as well as the fiscal guidance that has been given to us by, by the Board of Alderman and, and the mayor. And then the, the final point is, we could, you know, not spend this money on, on, on this facility, but all we're gonna be doing is coming back before you and asking for money to repair the garage over at Streets Now, which is in terrible condition. It doesn't meet our operational needs. There's, all the pictures you saw last night with the fire assets can be said exactly for the DPW garage asset. And we are, we're gonna need to be cognizant of that and recognize that we have these needs and, and plan accordingly, and, and that's what we're doing, based off of the prior work that we did over the last year and a half or so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I, I would just make the request that the ad hoc committee may be that that plan gets refreshed. And now that, you know, as things, because it's my understanding that we, it, it's really kind of been static for a year.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Completely agree with that. I actually think we should come in this summer, revisit that plan, talk about it, reformulate it, because there are new needs that have, have, you know, come, come up. And we need to have a conversation and then look at the fiscal constraints that we have and check in. And, and I, I, I am committed to doing that. I think that's something that, if we could do over the summer months, I say that because we wanna do it during a non-budget season. You wanna have these strategic conversations during non-budget seasons, and then it would help us, you know, Dawn and I, as we're starting to think about FY '27 and beyond. Thank you.
Director Cummings will tell you, I've asked that same question a number of times to him, about having, first of all, getting rid of the name of ad hoc, since that was a one-time thing. Getting a new name and a sort of a strategic plan for bonding and projects in the city that goes out maybe 10 years, and so we can plan ahead. The other thing is, with this project, what they're trying to do now is get a set of final plans. And I'm on infrastructure, and I pointed out to them that we may not be able to build this entire building in one fell swoop. So, the building should be planned, and I think is being planned, so it can be built in phases, which pushes the cost out. But you have to have those final plans before you know how you can do that and what the costs are. You know, in, in the school projects, we always don't have the final picture till we have construction drawings. And that's when I tell people, when you have those, they don't change. They're expensive to change. So, I think we need to get to the final plan, and this is the step to do it. So, any other questions? Alderman Senate?
Thank you. I'll preempt my comments by saying that I've been inside the garage. I understand the conditions that are in there. I think it's abhorrent that we're asking our employees to work in those conditions, and I think it's abhorrent that we're treating our city's investments in terms of the equipment that way. This goes back to maybe the comments that maybe somebody who sat in these seats long before I was ever thought of, maybe should have been thinking about that, but that's neither here nor there. It's 2025, and we have a decision to make. I do have a question in regard to the total cost of the project. I brought up during the public hearing that we, last year, had appropriated 2.2 million dollars towards the design. We're looking for another 5.5, so we're at 7.7 in total design costs thus far. We also heard that the total build-out of the project is estimated now at 54 million. My question is whether or not that 54 million includes design, or if that's just with designs in hand and going to construction.
Alderman, yes, Director Cummings?
Yeah, that, so to be clear, that 54 million would be a total project cost that includes design.
Okay. Another question I think that I have is, you had indicated that if the 2.2 million that we'd already appropriated hasn't already been expended, that it would be soon. What is the time urgency in regard to this 5.5 million to continue the design project?
Director Cummings?
Yeah, great, great question. Time is our enemy, and so, everything we're doing is predicated on assuming that we're gonna start construction sometime next summer, next spring. And we need to have a design in hand to be able to, to do that. So, we know that costs unfortunately go up year over year, so just, if we, if we were to push this out, then all I'm gonna say to you is all of the numbers that we're talking about right now are going to increase. I don't have an exact number of what that increase is, but we're seeing numbers between 8 and 10% year over year.
Alderman Senate?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not my intention to push this out a year or anything to that nature. But I thought Alderman Sullivan made a good point, which is that the to-be-renamed committee that is examining our bonding strategy going forward, I, I think that having them reconvene, especially where this is a, the totality of this project was originally estimated for 2027, I, I think having them reconvene sometime this summer, while the schedule is a little lighter, would be a prudent move. And in conjunction with that, we're 31, maybe 32 days out from the start of a new fiscal year. If we could have that committee reconvene and reevaluate this in the grand scheme of the priorities for bonding out five, 10 years, and then if it's decided that this is urgent and we need to bring it back forward, I'd be happy to support it at that time. But where there's a lot of outstanding questions, I, I think that's the strategy I would rather see. And I'm kicking this one around, but I think that may shape my vote tonight.
Alderman, T. Boom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, since I've, I've been here four years, I've been, I think I mentioned probably in the first couple of months I was here, that, and Alderman O'Brien's probably been mentioning it a long time before me, of, of a new fire station in this, in the city. Mostly because we don't have enough per, for our insurance, per how many people we have, and we certainly need one towards the northwest portion off Amherst Street somewhere, to really cover the city the way we're supposed to be covering the city. So, I am 100% for any fire improvements, whether it's a floor on, over at Amherst Street, or any of these roofs, or anything like that. But I think, you know, you can't just say, "Here's 200 million, do it all right now." Right? It's gotta be, you just can't do it that way. You gotta kinda phase it out, have a strategy for it, kinda figure out where you wanna do it. So, you can do competing things at the same time in another part of the city for something else. And I think, you know, somebody mentioned it in public, the public hearing earlier, that seemed like a disparaging remark to say that we built the new Public Works Building almost like it was a bad thing, and that people should have stayed in the rodent-infested buildings that we had, which was just appalling. I visited it when there was sounds in the walls over at the one by the landfill, and I've been to the, the one where they were using for Parks and Rec for many years, and those buildings were awful. And, you know, I think the garage is in really, really, really bad shape, too. And I think we do need to start making a plan. Like other people have said, it's been kicked down the road, and if we just keep kicking it, it's never gonna be even looked at. So, I support this. I, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but it's bonded out, and I, so I think that's where I fall on this. I think it's important that we start protecting the vehicles that we use on our roads that protect our citizens, and if we don't start protecting them, it's gonna cost more money in the long run over time, so that's where I stand.
Just, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been chairman of the infrastructure committee for a long time, and since the beginning, all this was discussed. The administration building was discussed, and at the same time discussed was looking at the Public Works Garage. Now, the reason it wasn't done, because the overall price was large, and we all had it in our minds then, so I don't understand the doubt now, maybe because we're newer people around the board. But the intention of the previous people who had voted at that particular time, that this would be looked at a later date, and as appears the later date is now, to move with this garage. Now, futuristically, there's a lot of benefits to it. Mostly, key things is to our investments, our trucks that we purchase. There's even talking about maybe a wash facility to get the salt, you know, these trucks deliver salt to our roads, but it, unfortunately, we live in the rust belt, and that same salt eats my car and eats the city trucks, you know? And the other things, too, but futuristically, there might be a hidden gem in this mix. Because if we complete this project, and it starts with this design, but if we complete this project, are we not looking at a futuristic ice hockey rink adjacent to Conway? Is one of the possibilities. And I think the city would most certainly, our constituents would most certainly benefit from that. And so, therefore, I, I'm gonna totally support this. To begin any project or to walk any mile, you gotta take one step at a time. And this is just a step to get them to get the design, so we know what the total cost in the future will be for this structure. And this is how every project that I've been involved with, with the DPW administration building and other projects, this is the same thing. We did the same thing, and mirroring with the school committee, the joint committee when they built the McCarthy School. So, this is all within the same parameters. So, thank you.
So, Alderman Sullivan?
No, you can go ahead.
I was gonna say that I've been involved with a lot of building projects. Right now, we've started a design with a design company. If we don't pass this tonight, and it gets delayed any amount of time, not only could we lose the people in that design company that are doing the design, which means people have to start over again at that design company, or you may lose the design company totally, and you start from scratch, and the 2 million we've already spent, you know, you can't have one person's design company stuff go over to another design company, and it doesn't work that way. So, I think it's pretty critically important that we get the design completed. We don't have to build a building tomorrow, but if we get the design completed, we know exactly how much it's gonna cost, and we can phase out when it's gonna be built, we're way ahead of the game. But if we stop the design and wanna restart it, it's gonna cost us a heck of a lot more, trust me, a lot more. Alderman Sullivan?
And to your comments, and I fully understand and respect what you say, however, if I didn't see that presentation last night, then I'd be all in on this. But given new information that I have tonight, that I didn't have, that I just got 24 hours ago, all I'm asking for is how does that affect our, our plan overall, over the next five years, to build this building, other capital improvements, and now, given the new information that we have about our fire facilities, how do we move that forward in addition to this? Because I, I do agree with a comment that was said earlier. We can do two things at once, and I fully expect that we can. I just don't want to paint the city into a corner by approving this tonight, and then we come out with, with a plan, and, and now we just say, "Oh, man, I wish I, I wish I had that day back. I'd, I'd probably change my mind, or, or maybe think a little bit differently." Again, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm gonna say no tonight, until I see that plan and how it's affected. I think that putting a new garage makes a lot of sense. I think that putting a new garage makes a lot of sense, but so does building a new fire station and improving Amherst Street Fire Station. All worthy projects. It's just prioritization and how it fits in the plan, and that's why I'm going to say no to this tonight.
I totally agree, but again, if we get the design done, I mean, it doesn't mean we have to start building the building the next day, or even the next months, or the next year, but we get the final design. Otherwise, if we put it off too long, and we lose the design team, and we have to start over again, we'll be spending another 7, 8, 9 million dollars to design it again. Alden, yes, Director Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear this conversation coming together, and what I want to try to assuage is the idea that maybe this is going to be like a fire DPW competition, and you shouldn't be thinking of it in those terms. The reason being is, more than anything else, and the chief is right here, and he can correct me if what I'm saying is about to be wrong, but we are still quite a few years away before we actually get to this new fire station concept. I would say three years before we're actually at construction, give or take, and that's if we work at that earnestly, starting like now. We're nowhere near design yet on the fire station. We're just starting a conversation about doing a feasibility study. We're talking about a concept or an idea on land that technically is owned by the city but not controlled, and we're going to need to work through these land issues before I could ever recommend starting any type of design conversation. And so I say that to you because when we're looking at this strategically, we are taking these sentiments into consideration so we can slot things in to make it work for everyone, because we know that the DPW has needs, we know the fire department has needs, we know that there are other needs as well. Police, they have a cell block area that needs to get reconstructed to maintain their accreditation, and we're very cognizant of that, we're working towards that, and that's why, you know, I think if we can continue on the work that we've done, this is what we're doing, we're building on previous work, we'll stay on the trajectory that we had previously discussed. Thank you.
Alden, Senate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask Director Cummings directly about a scenario that was brought up. I'm going to say, just based on the way it was delayed and everything, about a year ago, we appropriated 2.2 million. We went to a designer, said we want to design a Public Works garage, we have 2.2 million. At what point was it determined that the job would cost another 5 and 1/2? And if we were to work expeditiously this summer to reevaluate our plan and bring this forward in a couple of months, are we really going to lose that designer? Are we contracting with designers that are going to walk away like that?
Director Cummings?
If I may. I guess to answer the last question first, I don't necessarily believe that designer would walk away. I mean, they, I believe that they will have other projects that they will prioritize, and they will use a term called pencils down, and that's something you want to avoid, but they would still be there, and we would have to get back into their queue. Putting that aside, this is, this very issue that you're talking about, about, you know, the total project cost, and when did we get there, when did we realize it, it's the whole reason why I've been recommending that we start doing projects in a way where we're designing first before we start talking about construction dollars, because inevitably, we get into this habit of saying it's going to cost, in this instance, I'm going to say 30 million dollars for a fire station with no design. We don't know what the dirt is like, we don't know whether, you know, there's asbestos there, we don't know what additional cost that may be to us, but, you know, we're still going to banter around this 30 million dollar figure, and I don't know if that's correct. So if you were to break it off in pieces and chunks, and you develop a design, then you start to get a better idea as to what the total project cost is, and that's what we're doing with the DPW project right now. And so through the joint committee process, you know, as we continued to work through it, and we went through a concept design phase, and we're currently going through and about to wrap up a schematic design phase, the total project costs become more clear. Does not mean that that's exactly where it's going to be at the end of the day, because we still have design development to go through, and at the end of design development, that's when we will truly know what we think the project cost will be, and then we will proceed to what is referred to as construction documentation, and then ultimately onto construction. And during that design development phase, I would like to believe that we will continue to do value engineering to try to bring the project costs down, but I don't want to do that and compromise the design principles, the guiding principles that were set out at the onset of the project, because that would deviate too far from the scope. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so the motion before us is to recommend final passage to the full board of Alderman on R. 25151. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Division by hands, all in favor? And against? Motion passes. All right, Alderman O'Brien?
Also before us is R. 25-153, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,550,000 for fire and street department capital improvement reserve funds, SURF purchases. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
Motion on the floor is to recommend final passage of R. 25153 to the full board of Alderman. I believe this was explained in a lot of detail in the public hearing. Is there any additional questions you have? Yes, Alderman Sullivan?
Thanks. I could be wrong, but I thought in the public hearing tonight, it said that these were going to be, these are a pull forward, but these are in the fiscal year 26 SURF budget in our books. So I just wanted clarification. These are not being, these are not being pulled forward into this year from the fiscal year that we're currently in now.
No, they are being bought ahead to save money, but before August, which is FY '26.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I actually did have follow-ups, sorry.
Follow-up?
Have we done the calculation, understanding we're going to buy now, but we're going to bond it, which means it's going to raise the overall price of the vehicle? Have we done kind of a delta on really how much we're saving?
Dawn, do you want to? I was going to take a shot at it, but I'd rather have the treasurer do it.
Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. It's really kind of an unknown with the tariffs. We don't know what the effect is going to be. We're just trying to be proactive and try to save money now, if at all possible, but no, we do not know. These items are on the schedule to be bonded because they were large items anyway, so whether we purchase them right away because of the onset of tariffs or not, they still are items that are scheduled for bonding.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All set? Any other questions? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to recommend final passage of R. 25153. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Also before us is R. 25162, authorizing entering into a pledge agreement with the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority in connection with the bond not to exceed $3,500,000 power amount to be issued by the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority, redevelopment of the Mohawk Tannery. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the recommendation for final passage.
Motion on the floor is to recommend final passage to the full board of Alderman for Yes, do you identify yourself and give us an overview?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Devon. I work for Blaylock Holdings on the Mohawk Tannery project. I'm joined here tonight with Mr. Bernie Plant, Principal of Blaylock Holdings, the original founder of Blaylock, as well as Brad Westgate from Wyner Bennett, our esteemed counsel on the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment project that starts with the remediation. To steal a theme from Alderman O'Brien, past boards may have neglected Mohawk in terms of it being a problem for the city for 40 years, but this mayor, this board, this committee should be proud that this city has made it a priority to tackle Mohawk. As you all know, Mohawk has been a public health risk for the city for a long time. Two massive lagoons of carcinogenic sludge sit immediately adjacent to the Nashua River within the 100-year flood plain. The city had that tannery start in the 1920s. We're now in 2025. Those odds aren't great. Over the past several years, I've been working as the project manager, leading the effort on both fronts, both the remediation and the redevelopment side. The remediation side has been an extensive process with EPA, DES, and their third-party peer reviewers from Sanborn Head, but we're rounding third, so to speak. We filed in the beginning of April the 100% design for that cleanup. We've received back comments from the agencies, and after analysis, we think it's going to be a quick turn, projecting June 6 for refiling of that 100% with a quick approval after that. Over the past year and a half, we've met weekly, sometimes more than once, with the EPA and DES on that remediation plan, and we have resolved pretty much all of the issues. The 100% design was over 2,400 pages. Those iterations of design at the 30%, 60%, 95%, and then 100%, as you heard with the design of the DPW building, brings new light about, in terms of budgets and costs. The budget has escalated each design, and the most recent design, the 95% design and the 100% design, we've narrowed in that final budget. When we got that final budget, we had to make adjustments on our capital stack. One of the adjustments is a request from the city, this committee, and the board to increase its pledge from 2.5 million to 3.5 million dollars in incremental financing taxes from the redevelopment project, not out of the city's pocket today. Taxes that are projected at full buildout to be over $3 million year over year for the city. So the increase of $1 million is coming from that redevelopment project, and it coalesces with two separate acts. The New Hampshire Business Finance Authority, who's a participant in our capital stack to remediate the site, increased its loan commitment from 3.5 million to 4.5 million. They have also elected to not include the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority in the loan, so now rather than passing the loan from Business Finance Authority to the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority to Blaylock, it's going from BFA directly to Blaylock, sort of cutting out National Housing and Redevelopment Authority's contingent liability that they may have had on that transaction, so it streamlines that loan, and then all other obligations continue. So although the city on this particular bill may be increasing its commitment on the pledge of the taxes to help retire that bond, Blaylock also increased its commitment. Our equity contribution to the deal has increased from a little over 4 million to 8 to 9 million dollars for the remediation based on these design increases, so we're asking this committee to help participate so that we can finalize our deal with the city to finally clean up the site and make use of it so the city can have much-needed housing as well as additional tax revenue that otherwise wouldn't be in existence without the efforts of cleaning up the site.
Okay, that's very good. I've been involved with the tannery since I was a teenager, which is a hell of a long time ago, and it's long overdue for being cleaned up. Sat through many EPA meeting here in Nashville waiting for this all to happen, so I'm glad it's about to happen. I just want to make sure we understand who's paying off the bond that we're talking about.
So there will be, so out of the bond, there will be the taxes from the redevelopment site. So let's say the remediation occurs, and now the site is clean, the value of that land is now significantly more. There was an appraisal done by Cushman and Wakefield ordered by the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority that valued the clean land at around $19 million. So right away, once the cleanup's done, the value of the land has gone up significantly. So those taxes that would be generated from that new value of the land would go towards paying off the bond, and then obviously, as we develop the 546 homes, 216 apartments, I mean, 230 apartments, 316 condominiums, those now generate taxes, and that pays off the bond.
Okay, questions? Done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, there are no questions. The motion before us is to recommend to the full board the final passage of R. 25162. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also before us, and our last one it appears, R. 25-164, relative to the acceptance of a scoreboard for the joy field donated to the city by the Greater Nashua Little League. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Motion on the floor is to recommend to the full board, recommendation for final passage of R. 25164. Any questions? This is money coming to us, so.
Oh, I did have a question then.
Yes?
Does it count against the spending cap?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Tableau in committee, none?
None.
General discussion? Alderman, will you?
Just one thing, I'm glad that we continue to support the efforts of cleaning up the Mohawk Tannery. It's a big site, and like they said, it's much-needed housing and good tax revenue for the city, so 40 years of sitting there as a contaminated site is 40 years too long. Thank you.
I agree. Anyone? Okay, public comment? No, no one's here. Remarks by Alderman? I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening with all of these, there's a lot of things to consider, and I fully agree that we need to get that to-be-renamed ad hoc committee together so that we can generate a long-term plan and make sure all of these things fit in, both from a requirement standpoint, from a fiscal standpoint, and that the city can afford it. So it's very critical, I think, that we have that meeting, you know, in the summer, but fairly soon, because hopefully the summer's around the corner. I'm tired of this cold weather, so. Today wasn't bad, though. Any other comments? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Or adjourn at 9:09.